I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, statement of meeting procedures read by the court.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, September 14th, 2010. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there's a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones and pagers be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, it's time for public comment. Any member of the public wish to address the board on any item that is not on our agenda, knowing that we cannot take action on items raised in public comment? If there anybody wishes to address the board under public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to supervisor committee reports. Board members have anything to report out from committee activities since our last board meeting? Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you for this opportunity. I wondered if I could ask Mr. Michael J. Boyle to come to the lectern, please.
No singing, no.
That's an order, Mr. Boyle.
There is a provision under the government code that you have to do disciplined and open session.
Personnel, help me here.
I'm very pleased to be able to present this resolution this morning. If you'll allow me to read it before we move further on with that. This is a matter of a resolution condemning... no, commending. Michael, Mike J. Boyle, Assistant County Executive Officer, for nearly 22 years of dedicated service to Placer County. And whereas Michael J. Boyle was hired by Placer County on December 19th, 1988, to manage the Office of Emergency Services, and following an extraordinarily distinguished career that included several other portions, positions of increasing responsibility, Mike is now retiring from his position as Assistant County Executive Officer. And whereas Mike loves to call Placer County "the land of all perils" because its very geography ranges from valley grass and oak woodlands to the forests and peaks of the rugged Sierra Nevada, ranging also from suburbia to the most isolated rural areas, with multiple major transportation routes which combined to cause virtually every possible peril: floods, fires, avalanches, train derailments, freeway hazards, plane crashes, earthquakes, hazardous material incidents, human-caused incidents, and more, avoiding only so far volcanoes and satiels. Whereas during Mike's tenure with OES, he focused his superior emergency management skills on proactive team building, planning and training, and preparation to ensure that all agencies and staff are ready to serve in any emergency at any time. And whereas with Mike's leadership, local agencies and staff trained in practice in multiple emergency service drills in hospitals, libraries, outdoor venues, high schools, fire training centers, and more, and in responding to significant incidents such as devastating fires and hazardous material incidents. And whereas the 1990 floods, 1995 floods damaged hundreds of Placer County homes, and Mike was forced to manage early response from the beaches of Hawaii, all prior to a visit from the President of the United States, and subsequently followed by the floods of 1997, which devastated North Tahoe on New Year's Day and soaked Granite Bay on Super Bowl Sunday. And whereas Mike helped secure funding for the new County Emergency Operations Center in the Odo Building, to which center, and also hosted a 1999 New Year's Eve event for county managers working late because of the dreaded Y-2K millennium rollover. And whereas Mike provided compassionate and stellar leadership to both staff and community following the terrible tragedy of 9/11. And whereas while serving as Staff Lead for Placer County Fire, Mike helped maintain and enhance sustainable, cost-effective fire and emergency medical service within rural areas of Placer County that would otherwise have severely diminished service levels. And whereas during Mike's tenure at the County Executive Officer Office, he continued his style of active management in support of the Assessment Appeals Board, general board support, and as a valued member of the County Labor Team. And whereas Mike's remarkable service can best be characterized by integrity, competence, commitment, candor, selflessness, and unceasingly good humor, delivered with a bit of a tinkle in his eye. And whereas Mike's legacy and leadership in Placer County will live on through the organizations that, under his leadership, grew in their ability to provide outstanding services, and through the many employees, residents, and elected officials that he has taught, mentored, worked with, and served with throughout his remarkable career. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Cork, I mean the County of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, acknowledge with great appreciation Mike Boyle's exceptional service and wish him well in his retirement and future pursuits. Congratulations on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Board members. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I am deeply honored to present this to you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
I feel awkward, I didn't have time to go through this.
Yeah, usually. Thank you. And I'll ask the board to come down and, if you don't mind, have some pictures with you as well. We haven't got it by mouth. So, Mr. Holmes, is there more beyond that?
I believe so, but I think Mr. Boyle may have a few.
Oh, so we're gonna make him talk before we show that? He doesn't get a chance to read.
Is there more? I hope not. This is all I was asking. There's always more.
Yeah. Let's have some Guinness, you understand? I was gonna invite you out for a drink tonight, but that's off. It has been a long and rewarding career for me in my public service, and certainly my successes would not have happened without a lot of the people in this room and others and other boards, and for that, I'm extremely grateful. It is with great gratitude that I leave you today. It has been an extremely interesting and rewarding career, as I've said, and I hope that you will continue as my governing board in your excellence in service to the public and the citizens and the leadership that you have shown. I am extremely proud to have worked here. I don't know of a better place in my professional career than I've ended up, and for that, I thank you very much, and thank all my colleagues in the room and others for contributing to our collective success. So, thank you, Mr. Holmes and other Board members, and Mr. Miller, for the opportunity to serve. Thank you. Before you get too far, Supervisor Rockholm?
I just wanted to thank Mike for the opportunity. I've had to work with Mike, and I think that when Jim mentioned the word candor, it was really a good way to frame it, because Mike was not afraid to tell us when he thought we were doing wrong or which direction we should take, and you need that, you need to hear that sometimes, and it really, really helps us. I'll be joining you in a couple of ways, but I wish you all the best. You've done a great job. I've enjoyed working with you, and I would say at the end of the day, you've always had the best interests of the County of Placer in mind and not anything personal for yourself, and I really have appreciated that, and it's been great to work with you.
Thank you, Rocky. Likewise, Supervisor Montgomery?
Mike, I want to say thank you, though I really only had the opportunity to work one-on-one with you for the past 20 months. I've known you a lot longer than that.
Yes.
Through my husband in the fire service, who always spoke very highly of you, wished he could be here today and asked me to pass along his congratulations and his, really, his envy and jealousy that you're retiring and he isn't.
Say hi to Dan for me.
I will, I will. I want to thank you for your guidance and your advice, while, as you know, I don't always take it, I do listen.
Ever noticed that, Supervisor?
I know, it's shocking. It's valuable to me to have a voice such as yours that gives me maybe a different look at things. I hope that if I have issues, concerns, that I still might be able to pick up the phone and pick your brain for some advice, but best of luck in retirement.
Thank you.
And have a wonderful time. Enjoy yourself.
I intend to. Thank you. Mike, many of us are better supervisors in Placer County, certainly a better place because of your service. Thank you very much. Thank you, Supervisor Euler.
And I have to agree with Supervisor Euler's comment. Certainly, I'm gonna have to figure out what I'm gonna do with, when you're gone, because you were always my go-to guy to, am I going the right path here, or would you read this and see what you think? So I hope this little resolution meets your expectations.
Certainly has. Thank you.
Very well.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks for your time. Congratulations. Thank you.
And we'll go ahead and pause a moment for those assembled in green who were here for this one item, who wish to go ahead and depart and head back to wherever, from whence you came.
Wait a minute, beer and cake.
Okay, anything else under supervisor's committee reports? Not a, not an everyday item, for sure.
I got a whole new concept of Braveheart.
I, I, I do have one thing that I'd like to mention under supervisor committee reports. Last, last week, it was just last week, we were up here discussing the PPEO contract, and though I had it on good authority, I misspoke in terms of cap on vacation hours. In fact, vacation hours are capped for PPO employees at 512 hours, I believe, you know?
That's for management.
That's for man... 520, 520 hours, thank you very much. See, now I know who to go to for, so they are, they are in fact capped. I misspoke when I said the vacation hours were uncapped. I wanted to correct that at the first available opportunity. Seeing nothing else under supervisor committee reports, we will go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that any board member wishes to have removed from consent for discussion? I see Supervisor Montgomery's light on.
Yes, I'd like to pull items 8A and B for a vote.
Okay, items 8A and 8B. Any other items that supervisors would like to have removed for discussion? Seeing none, any member of the public wish to have any item on consent removed for discussion?
Move approval of remaining items.
Okay, we have a motion on consent, absent items 8A and B. Roll call, please.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler? Aye. Items 8A and 8B will take up right now. Supervisor Montgomery, any thoughts on that?
I just wanted to reiterate my vote of last week against the imposition on the PPEO employees, so for that reason, I asked this to be pulled for a voice vote.
Move approval. Second.
Motion, Holmes, second, Rockholm, to approve items 8A and 8B. Roll call, please.
Holmes?
Aye.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Montgomery?
No.
Euler? Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to our first department head item, which is, oh, the Resort Association Agreement. Very nice. I suspect that's one of the reasons why Ms. Merchant is here this morning, in addition to showing off her fine green.
I wanted to make sure it looked good on video, so I went as bright as I could go, in honor of Mike. Good morning, Supervisor Euler, members of the board, Jennifer Merchant with the County Executive Office, from the far eastern reaches of the lands of peril, North Lake Tahoe, where many of the situations that Mike has worked on over the years have actually occurred. Enjoyed working with him myself on many of those. So I am here actually this morning to discuss with you the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association Agreement. The agreement for your consideration today would allocate $4,177,215 in transient occupancy tax funds for the promotion of tourism and visitor-serving capital projects and transit operations. The primary task of the Resort Association, as I'm sure you know, is to promote tourism and to provide guidance to the Board of Supervisors on infrastructure project and visitor-support service expenditures. The recommended agreement amount will fund Resort Association administrative costs, direct marketing, program research, visitor information, transit services, and various infrastructure projects in the North Lake Tahoe area. This agreement also continues ongoing TOT fund allocation to maintain important base-level county services in the North Lake Tahoe area, including up to $800,000 in TOT funds to be allocated this year to maintain the Tahoe Health Clinics, Tart Bus, and Public Safety Services. Additionally, half of the fiscal year '09-10 TOT fund balance and all of the fiscal year 2010-11 TOT funds allocated to the infrastructure account will be held in reserve to possible allocation to fund other essential services, such as snow removal and transit, in the event that other state budget cuts occur in the next few months. The agreement also creates a $150,000 reserve fund for the maintenance of tourism-serving facilities and allows for growth in the Resort Association's marketing programs. Capital projects to be considered this year for funding under the agreement include the Squaw Valley Olympic Ski Heritage Museum, a performing arts facility, regional wayfinding signage, a North Star multipurpose bike trail. All TOT allocations for capital projects are recommended to your board following a public Resort Association Committee and Board Review process. So should any of those projects or other projects come forward during this year, your board will have an opportunity to review those. And in order to provide the aforementioned services, the contract budget allocates funds to the following resource categories: $2.2 million for marketing, $1.1 million for visitor support and transportation, and $823,000 for capital improvements. And I would like to point out that Ron Triebus and Andy Chapman and Sandy, excuse me, Sally Lyon are in the audience today and may, may like to comment on the contract, provide any additional comment, but before then, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Any questions of Jennifer? Okay, seeing none, anybody else in the public wish to comment on the agreement at this point?
This really caught us by surprise. My name's Ron Triebus, excuse me. Caught us by surprise. We didn't realize this was on the agenda this morning. We really all just blew down here for Boyle's retirement, which was a little bit of a concern on our part, too, because we assumed the Guinness was gonna be pouring, and as probably most of you know, that we just finished up with a very successful 25th anniversary of the Autumn Food and Wine Festival, and we were a little late because we had on our agenda till 7 o'clock this morning to dry out, but we are now here. In fact, we sent Tom back early so that he could be here in case we didn't make it, but thank you very much for taking this on. And what I wanted to just say for Sally Lyon, who's our Chief Financial Officer, and Andy Chapman, who's the Director of Tourism and our advisor to the North Lake Tahoe Chamber of Commerce, that this particular year, in all of our length of time with the Resort Association, was a real pleasure to put together this agreement. Between Tom and particularly Jennifer, and the three of us, we didn't have a negotiation anymore, but rather we had a discussion as to how to best put together an agreement that would allow us to help you all and the county staff to, to provide for the people of eastern Placer County. And it went extremely smoothly. There was, I don't think, any debates at all. It was, when points came up, we discussed them and came to a resolution, and we just wanted to let you know that, that it was a very successful opportunity to work with the County Executive Office, and that we really are committed to continue to improve our understanding, our communications, and our productivity of this partnership that we have with, with the Board of Supervisors and Placer County. And again, we look forward to continuing this relationship, and thank you very much for considering approving the agreement this year.
Thank you, Ron. Any other questions or comments by members of the public before we bring it back to the board? Okay, seeing none, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody, Ron, Andy, Sally, Jennifer, Tom, your board from the Resort Association, who worked so diligently at this. It really appeared as a little bit of an outsider, because I was not part of the actual discussion. I won't even call it negotiations, I'll call it discussion, to use Ron's word. It really looked as if this was the easiest path that we've had in years, and that we got to some really good results here. I went through this very carefully, both with Holly and with Jennifer, over the last couple of days, and was very pleased to see a number of suggestions that I had had rolled into the agreement, and really, the support for, as I call it, the four Bs: beaches, bathrooms, bus shelters, and bike paths, which are really the things that our visitors and our locals all use and all really...
Bars?
Beer?
Bars?
No, not bars, not beers. Beaches, bathrooms, bus shelters, and bike paths. I'll leave those other two Bs to the two of you, but, you know, I think...
Two B or not two B?
There was a, four B or not four B in this case. There was a statement in the staff summary that I think really reflects where we're going with this over the next couple of years, which is, as with last year's agreement, the fiscal year 2010-11 agreement continues the shift of funding from capital project allocation to maintaining base-level county services. And I think that's reflected both in the basin specifically, but more largely in the county. We're really focusing on providing those base services that people need, and I was just very pleased to see this contract continue to do that, and I think we need to focus on continuing that direction over the next couple of years. Obviously, marketing, critical, because if we don't get people up here, they can't use our beaches, bike paths, bus shelters, and bathrooms. But really, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you, because I think it's a good contract, I think it serves the needs of both visitors and residents alike, and I think it's just a job very well done, so thanks to all of you.
Is that a motion to approve?
That's a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Montgomery, second, Rockholm, to approve the agreement with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, as described in our agenda packet, and under discussion. In preparation for this item, I spoke with both Ron McIntyre and Alex Morlatos, and both of them were very appreciative of the way that this agreement came together this year. I believe Ron captured their sentiments accurately. They both were very complimentary of Jennifer, the CEO's office in general, and the very cooperative way that this agreement came together this year, so I just wanted to pass that along.
Good work.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? Thank you very much. Okay, move on to Facility Services. Joel's gonna step up and take this one, huh?
Thank you, Chairman Euler, members of the board. Joel Swift with Facility Services. I with, excuse me, I with me today as well Doug Hawke, our capital improvements architect, who's been working on this project. Today's recommendation for your board is to put plans and specifications and authorize staff to solicit bids for the job order contracting, which is project number 9486. As, by way of background, back in April 6th of this year, your board approved a contract for a job order contracting system with the Gordian Group of Mulden, South Carolina, for the Departments of Facility Services and also for Public Works. The scope of this particular job order contract is for facility services, general construction, repair, remodeling, and repetitive type of construction. The Department of Public Works will return to your board at a later date regarding their job order contracts. And the way the job order contract system works is, we will publish a construction task catalog that contains a whole set of unit prices, and this catalog has been developed by the Gordian Group nationally, using their experienced labor, high-quality materials, and all the unit prices are based on our local labor and material costs. And then contractor, general contractors will bid three sets of adjustment factors: regional, basically for this side of the hill, and the other region being eastern slope and forest hill. There's a little errata mentioning the forest hill city limits, but really, the issue in the board memo, but the real issue is that forest hill area and Tahoe basically have a slightly different unit cost. The other two factors are for secure facilities and for working hours, either normal hours or non-normal hours. And the price of any individual project will be determined by multiplying those preset unit costs by the quantities, by the appropriate adjustment factors. The minimum contract value is intended to be $50,000 for each contract, and we are looking at two contracts, and the contractor will receive aggregate job orders totaling at least $50,000 during the contract term, which is a one-year term. And those terms, the term is set by state public contract code. The estimated maximum contract value is $1 million, however, we as the county reserve the right to increase that up to the state allowable amount, which is $4.1 million. So upon your board's approval, specifications will be bidded, and the staff will return to your board at a later date with a recommendation for award to the two lowest bidders, and for a proposed at that time, a more detailed process that includes a level of delegated authority for award of job orders. So in order to proceed with job order contracting projects, it's requested that your board authorize staff to solicit the bids, and we anticipate participation from many local contractors within the Placer County Community, at the general contractor level as well as the subcontractor level. There are sufficient funds in the capital funds project account for these services, and with that, this concludes the staff presentation. If there's any questions from your board, we're willing to answer that.
Thank you. Joel, any questions by board members? Supervisor Montgomery?
I wanted to say thank you for catching the issue there with cities. I was a little concerned that Forest Hill had incorporated while I was looking.
We didn't notice it. Were you concerned? Were you concerned or optimistic?
Well, you know, my feelings were slightly hurt, let's put it that way. I do have a question as to why two contracts?
Okay, absolutely. You know, we've surveyed some of our other agencies that do this, and they all recommended at least two, two or maybe three. And the reason being is, you don't know how well these contractors are going to perform. You've got to know, one-year agreement, you're going to do a certain amount of work with them. But you don't know if they'll be strong or weak, or if they'll service us. And the notion is, it's sort of a competition thing. You have two good contractors, and they're more likely to perform if they have another guy waiting in the wings. So generally, that's been the recommendation. And certainly, that way, we, in talking to the consultants with Gordian Group, they feel that some contractors are stronger staying electrical, and others might be better in demolition. So really, we can play off their strengths.
Sure. Other questions by board members? Any member of the public wish to address the board on this item? And we have a...
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Holmes, and I think Montgomery squeaked in there with the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Joel. Moving on to Health and Human Services. Maureen is coming up with this one. Though not green, a very nice outfit nonetheless. There is a little bit of green in the scarf, one should acknowledge.
Thank goodness.
You've always got that covered, yes.
Good morning. Maureen Baman with the Department of Health and Human Services. And I'm here really representing both Sheriff Bonner and Chief Probation Officer, Pecore. Barbara Bassana from the Sheriff Office is in the audience, should you have detailed questions that I would have a struggle answering. But I think it's pretty straightforward. I have before you a request to amend the contract with the California Forensic Medical Group. It is the contract that we have for inmate healthcare services. This amendment will extend that contract for an additional one year, which will take it through September 30th, 2011. As you know, inmate healthcare services required for Placer County Jail and juvenile detention facility include primary medical care, dental care, pharmaceuticals, mental health services, acute hospital care, and specialty care to a current population of approximately 585 inmates and wards. The current contract was written so that there was available two one-year extensions, and this amendment will actually implement the first of those one-year extensions. We're doing that because we expect that the jail operations will stay at the current level for an additional one year, prior to an anticipated expansion after that. CFNG has been a long-term, high-performing contractor in Placer County. I would note that we really believe that these services are more cost-effective through privatization than they would be in a county-operated kind of program. And risk management concurs that the CFNG has reduced the county's liability through its staffing practices, adherence to IMQ medical protocols, and ability to mitigate lawsuits filed against Placer County. The amendment contract will remain at the same level of services, with the minor exception that the contractor will no longer have HIV reimbursement available through state funding, HIV medication reimbursement available through state funding. That funding was eliminated in the state budget. Our solution to that was that the contractor will be responsible for up to 50% of anticipated costs based on the last two years, and the county will contribute a flat rate of $22,500 towards the contract period. They were appreciative of that particular amendment. No changes were made to staffing levels or negotiated cost structures. I would point out that the average daily population is expected to be reduced from 640 previously to 585. And this, in fact, will reduce our per diem costs that are on inmate, per inmate expense over a capped amount of 540. So that cost will be reduced by 45%, and is expected to be $69,000 for the next year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but recommend approval of the one-year extension.
The question I have is, to what do you attribute that estimated drop in the number of folks served? It's a fairly substantial drop.
That is specifically related to the great work that is happening with the criminal justice partners using alternative sentences to the jail.
Okay. Any of the board members have any questions? Seeing none, any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Motion, Rockholm, second by Holmes, to approve the item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? Thank you very much. And having a little bit of time before our 10 o'clock timed item, we'll go ahead and take up the items in a closed session, throw it over to Tony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board will pick up the items on page two, item seven. There's two existing litigation matters in conference with its labor negotiators. We will return by 10 o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the open session. The Board of Supervisors meeting back to order with a report out from closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board has returned from closed session. With regards to the two litigation matters, the first one that was discussed is Forest Hill Residents for Responsible Growth versus Placer County. That is the lawsuit challenging the county's adoption of the Forest Hill Community Plan. The county has reached a settlement with those individuals, and the Board has approved it 4-0 this morning. That document will be available for public review later today. Mr. Finley in my office will have a copy of the document, and he can respond to any questions. Also, while in closed session, the Board took up County of Placer versus Soda Springs Rental. This was a challenge by the county to collect past TOT taxes and interest earned. A settlement was reached in that matter also. A stipulated judgment has now been signed. The matter will be assigned to Revenue Services for collection. The judgment is for eighty-nine thousand and some odd dollars with a payment schedule. That also is a public document and can be available for review later today. The Board did not take up labor negotiations, and I expect we will return to closed session later this morning for those after we end up the rest of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tony. Okay, we will go ahead and proceed with our ten o'clock timed item. This is a public hearing review and approved spending plan for fiscal year 2010-11 for the Sheriff, coronal marshal, district attorney from the citizens' option for public safety or COPS supplemental law enforcement services fund. And good morning.
Good morning, Chairman.
How are you? They won't let you go, will they?
No, I'm still here.
Okay.
But I did, I did mention that we see green every day, and so that when I do the service of the county, I would maybe select pink or some alternate color for the, for the memo. But sorry, I didn't get the memo today.
Margaret Basana, Admin Services Director for the Sheriff.
As Supervisor Yuler indicated, we are here to request a public hearing for the citizens' option on public safety. This year, the amount for the frontline law enforcement is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one thirty-seven. The amounts for the jail and for the district attorney is eighty thousand, six fifty-four. There is some carryover from last year for the jail in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, four eighty-three. As in previous years, the district attorney plans to use those funds to partially fund an attorney in their office. The frontline law enforcement is for our SB ninety detective, which is the sexual registrant detective. And then in the jail, the funds are used for safety equipment and for maintenance and upgrades to the building or facility. So at this time, if you have any questions, I could answer them, or you could open it to public comment.
Any Board members have any questions on the allocations as described? Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, Ms. Basana, thank you. And what is the definition of frontline law enforcement services? I mean, is a community policing officer?
That would be the officers in the field.
Okay. So a community service officer or a COPS officer would be included in that?
The community service officer is a civilian position, so that would not apply to them.
Okay, what about a COPS officer?
But we do, we, problem-oriented policing in Tahoe would be one of the officers or any of the officers actually providing that direct service to the public.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, this is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open this up to the public. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Don't all jump up at once. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, break it back to the Board for action. Moser Rockwell, second by Holmes. Any other common or questions by Board members? Hold on a favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. Move on to our ten oh five item. Is this you again, Barbara?
Yes, it is me again.
Very nice.
Barbara Basana again. And I'm asked, going to ask Sergeant Michael Beauregard to join me in presenting this item to the Board. It's an informational item, but it has been our practice in the last several years to bring this up for discussion so that if the Board has any questions and that we can also introduce. Sergeant Beauregard is the new CHP sergeant that supervises the task force, which is comprised, the one dollar fee to implement the auto theft task force for the region as well as the regional mobile fingerprint ID. And every year, we have received funds from the state that in the full years, that ranges from three hundred and forty to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And the, for the task force, I'll let Sergeant Beauregard go over the actual operational details, but that funds the majority of the amounts for the three officers, one in each agency, plus the operational supplies. The city of Rockland provides the housing and the site for the task force at no cost. And at this time, I'll turn over to the Sergeant, and then I'll follow up with the report on the mobile ID and fingerprinting.
Good morning, Sergeant. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The monies that we receive are used to, for our communications equipment, training, transportation, administrative costs, and equipment. We try to limit the purchase of equipment to what we need. Right now, we're, I believe, pretty well-equipped with everything we need at this point. If there's anything else we really need to?
Probably the operational activities on how well the, the recoveries or what the changes are from year to year.
Yes, at two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, there were seven hundred thefts with a recovery of four hundred and seventy-seven, which was a sixty-eight percent recovery rate. Twenty-nine, twenty-ten, the thefts dropped to six hundred and thirty-six with about the same amount, four hundred and seventy-four recoveries. Again, we increased our recovery rate, but major decrease in our thefts. Again, I think this is definitely attributed to the task force going after the major players. The equipment, the technology we have now has been a very good help. We have a license plate reader that we deploy now on a daily basis, and it has led to some, some very successful arrests. Again, we had about one hundred and forty-one investigations last year with nineteen arrests. Our recovery values went down. I guess they were about one point one million the year before. Went down to almost four hundred thousand last year. It was a big decrease because I believe there was four vehicles worth over six hundred thousand dollars that were recovered in Placer County. So it accounted for a big drop. The other thing is, in talking to the task force members, they've actually taken down some fairly large organizations, and these people have been put away for quite a while. So we expect the, these people will be out and back up and running in a few years, so we're definitely keeping our eyes on them. We're really trying to increase our probation searches to get a proactive approach to this. Again, we'd like to see the theft rate down to zero. One of the things that we really want to focus on now is public education. I think that was missing in the last three years. So we're working on putting a website out to get information out to the people, how to keep their cars safe. And there's a few other items that I'll bring in front of the committee on other ways that we can reduce our vehicle theft rate.
Okay, Supervisor Rockwell?
I just got to ask Sergeant, you guys offer the local PDs, like show them trends and some of the things that, you know, were going on? You know, like for example, when I was in law enforcement, they, we had a lot of thefts where they would steal it, it'd be recovered, and they'd go buy it as salvaged, and then put it back together.
Yeah, that, you know, I've done some trend analysis in Placer County. Placer County is more of a transportation theft right now, where people are stealing a car, going around to another location to steal another car, taking the contents out and selling them. But we have, one of the big focuses that I've talked to my people is we're going to go to every area, and we're going to train. We're going to talk about what's, what's happening, our, our top stolen vehicles, what to look for. If we get a vehicle that's abandoned, let's contact the task force, see what we can do. And instead of just taking a recovery, let's see if we can get a body in there and move forward like that. But yes, training is definitely one of the top priorities of this year.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, I was wondering, our, our actual expenditures for last year were four hundred and fifty-nine, almost four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Do you know roughly what it was the year before?
The, part of the four fifty-nine was a hundred and eleven thousand dollars that was carried over from the year before because it hadn't been paid out. But it's really been about between three forty and three sixty.
Okay.
That's the average right now.
Okay. Three forty and three sixty, okay. I was just trying to figure out the cost basically per vehicle to recover. And it seems like it's around nine hundred dollars per vehicle, roughly?
Yeah.
A little more than that? Okay, thank you.
Any other Board members? Supervisor Holmes.
I know the Board took a little heat for putting this program together back in, when was it, two thousand and seven?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But I, by your report and the last year's report, we can certainly see that it is very valuable to the community. So just appreciate your efforts, and I appreciate the collaboration between all the departments. Thank you.
Ken, Kirk's got a calculator, so you probably figured that out.
Well, well, this is not an action item, simply the Board receiving a report. Certainly want to make sure that it's available to any members of the public if they have any questions or comments on this at this time. Okay, and seeing none. I will occasionally see news stories talking about primarily Sacramento counties where they use the bait car. And you'll see the actual footage from inside the bait car. I think the more stories like that we can get in and around our area, the better. I think that on the one hand, you don't really want to tip your hand that you have this, but on the other hand, I think that the more folks know that we have a very active and aggressive auto theft deterrence program, maybe the less likely they are to take that step in our jurisdiction to begin with, and maybe they go looking for more fertile hunting grounds elsewhere.
I think that's a good idea and, and good as we move forward to include that. And I know your Boards approved bait cars that in conjunction with NICB.
Right.
So it's certainly possible to work something that out.
That's, that's one of the things that we're looking for right now. Again, one of the big items taken in Placer County is sport bikes.
I'm sorry?
Sport bikes.
Oh, okay.
It's a huge problem for Placer County, mainly because there's a lot of apartments, a lot of kids going to school here, and that's a fertile shopping ground. So we're moving forward with a few bikes that we've targeted probably to put into a bait, put a bait bike program together here. I've been working with the CHP is where I'm from, investigative services unit. They have two bait cars assigned to them full-time. I've been talking to the supervisor. In fact, I have a meeting today at one to go over bringing those up and deploying them in Placer County. So at plea, I'm going to talk to the chiefs and find out who's having some, some major issues, and we're going to start with those areas and push forward that way.
Yeah. What's that?
Videos, prices.
Oh, yeah. And I just, we have a representative of whole country media here, and I'm sure some of the other media outlets would love the opportunity to write a little bit about something like this, and I think the more, the merrier. Kim, come on to your ride along. Thank you.
Good sense.
All right. If that concludes your report, the Board doesn't have any action that we have to take at this point, so we want to thank you very much for the report.
And then?
Is there anything else, Barbara, that you?
Just, just a little bit of information on the fixed and mobile identification programs. It has not been moving quite as fast, but there's a lot being done in the background. All the regional cities have met on the task force, and they're, the cost for the actual mobile ID and fingerprint program takes a few more dollars. The project takes a little, is a little bit more complex to put together. We do have some, I think it was mentioned before, prototypes out in the field, which has already been successful in helping to apprehend a suspect. And so we'll be seeing more movement on actually putting those into place. We had some setbacks because we were, Sacramento was taking the lead, and we finally said, well, rather than have them take the lead because they weren't moving very quickly, our folks are taking that upon themselves to do that with Roseville and Rockland and the other cities. So I think we'll see some good stuff come out of this program that'll really benefit the region, so, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our ten oh five timed item. The last remaining open session item is our eleven o'clock timed item in regard to the ten eleven final budget. We do have labor negotiation discussions to conduct in closed session. So is there anything that you want to say, Tony?
No, I think we said it.
All right, so we will go ahead and head into closed session to take up conversations with our labor negotiators, and then return for our eleven o'clock timed item.
We'll go ahead and head into closed session to take up conversations with our labor negotiators and then return for our 11 o'clock time dial. You know? You're welcome. Thank you. 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 You're welcome. Thank you.[776.00]
We'll be one second. And we're now recording, so we will go ahead and reconvene in the September 14th meeting, the Plaster County Board of Supervisors with a report out of closed session in regard to conversation with labor negotiators.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board has returned from closed session and taken up the last item of its closed session, item seven on page two, item B, dealing with labor negotiations. The board discussed with its labor negotiators present status of conversations with the DSA. That was the only matter discussed. That closes this report.
Great, thank you. And our final item today is our 11 o'clock timed item where our board will be considering taking action on our final budget for 2010, and we will conduct a public hearing associated with this item. So, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Linda Oatman with the County Executive Office. As you mentioned, we're here today to conduct the final, the public hearing for the final budget, and then later we'll request direction to bring back a resolution at the September 28th meeting to adopt the final budget. Now, this, this presentation is going to include a lot of information that you've already seen, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those slides. If you have any questions about them, let me know, and I'll answer them to the best of my ability. The proposed budget is, is an interim spending plan adopted in June to enable us to do, continue to do business until the final budget is adopted in September. This next slide is to illustrate that the budget is a year-round process. It's not just when we show up here at the board to adopt the proposed budget and adopt the final budget and update your board sometimes during the year. We're already starting to work on the planning for next year's budget, and during the year we monitor the budget to make sure that fund balance comes in at the way we expected it. And there are many other things, and I won't go into detail on all of them. Now, this year, the final budget includes everything that you saw in the proposed budget presentation with, with the additions of the, per the direction of the board at the board workshops. The general, there was no additional impact to the general fund from those, those changes. And although we've made operational reductions over the last several years, we've still had to balance a budget using MTOs and using $31.5 million of general fund fund balance, nine million in reserves from the general fund and from other funds. And I've just, would like to make the comment that this is not sustainable in the long term. At some point, we're going to have to stop using reserves or reduce our use of reserves and start putting money back in there when we can. This, the recession has lasted a lot longer than anyone expected. We still have, we're still facing challenges from the state. They have a budget deficit, and we still don't have, they still don't have a budget. Historically, they have turned to counties to help balance the budget, so we'll have to come back to your board at a later date with, with the impacts for when the state budget is adopted. This is a comparison of the final budget to the final budget last year. There's a net decline of 26.2 million, which is a 3% decline year over year. This shows more detail by fund of what, what the actual changes are. Infrastructure funding went down by $43 million, and they're actually in the operating funds of increase of $16 million. This is, this is funded in part by fund balance rollover from the different funds, and then in the general fund in particular that we had an extra, well, as, as we mentioned before, we have extra $4 million in fund balance. Five million dollars of this, this is a comparison of final budget to final budget. Five million dollars of this 13 million actually happened during 9/10 when we actually received the allocations for HHS in the budget we had expected. Higher state impacts to HHS, which didn't materialize, so we added that back to the budget during 9/10. The remainder is the fund balance rollover and re-budgets or grant funding, funded expenditures. This is a slide that you've seen before. It just illustrates how we used to have revenues that exceeded expenditures, which allowed your board to fund priorities. That changed during '08, '09, and now we, our expenditures are higher than our revenues. But I should point out that this is all operating funds, not just the general fund, and somewhat masks the effect of the recession on the discretionary revenues, and that's not shown here. So, this is a slide that shows the pattern of the discretionary revenues over the last five years, and the discretionary revenues includes property taxes and sales taxes, interest, fines and penalties, those kinds of things. But apart, the property taxes by far the largest revenue in, in this group, and so this line is actually driven by the behavior of the property taxes over the last five years. We talked about the general fund reserve earlier. As you can see, we, this is part of the planned use of fund, of reserves for the four years, and over the last three years, reserves have decreased by 54%. The recession is lasting longer than we expected, as I mentioned, and so at some point we have to think about reducing our use of reserves. This is a familiar slide. It shows the difference between where we used to be able to use fund balance and, and revenues to fund board priorities, one-time, one-time things, and now we're using two-thirds of the fund balance rollover to fund operational costs. I just want to talk about fund balance a little more at this point. Fund balance seems to be misunderstood. It is not excess revenue. It is part of the planned budget. Every year when we plan the budget, we estimate what our fund balance should be, and then during the year we're monitoring the budget and making, to make sure that the fund balance is going to come in as we projected it. And if during the middle of the year we think fund balance is going to be low, then we would need to come back to your board to adjust the budget, as we did in fiscal year '08, '09, when we had to make a mid-year budget reduction. I'd like to liken this to doing your household budget. You kind of know how much you have to spend each month. You kind of know how much you, you have to spend it on. You, you know what things you've got coming up, if you have any money left over at the end of the month. You can, you can manage your money if you think you've got, like, you have to replace your tires on your car or something for the next month, so you can save some this month to, to use the next month or to save for a family vacation. You manage your money. We manage the money. We manage the budget so that the fund balance comes in at what we expect it to be. And it is a standard business practice for, for this county and for other government agencies to manage fund balance and to build a budget with a fund balance assumption. This slide you've seen before. It just illustrates the types of things that we have spent, used fund balance and one-time revenues on in the past, and shows that we, we don't have much left to be, to be, to use these days. We'll go to the staffing now. We have 41 fewer funded positions in this year's budget. That's a 2% drop over last year. It's actually a 7% drop since '07, '08, and departments are managing to, still managing to provide services despite the reduction in staffing and the cutbacks that they've had to make. This illustration is the per capita, the per cap, the positions per capita, and as we mentioned before, the red line is actually the funded positions. The blue line is allocated positions per capita. You can see that they have gone down pretty significantly over the last four years. This slide compares the, the proposed budget to the final budget. We saw this at the board workshops. Nothing has changed since then except for the board-directed changes. This gives you detail by fund of the changes, and if, and I think we've been over this before, so if you have any questions, let me know, but otherwise I'll just move on. This is a slide you've also seen before. We have summarized the, the revenues and expenditures so that we can get it onto one slide. You can see that discretionary revenues actually went down by about $400,000 between proposed budget and final budget. So, that concludes the, the presentation that I have for the, the county final budget. We have another slide which involves the special districts and the CSAs. So, do you have any questions on any of the slides that I just showed you?
Yes, I have a couple. Jumping back, we made a slide eight.
Yes.
When I'm looking at the subtotal of the operating funds, we're looking at a 3.2% increase. What is the primary driver for that increase?
The primary, well, okay, the, the primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund. The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, five million of that happened during 9/10 when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased significantly. So, that's been a major factor. The primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety
Now, this, this presentation is going to include a lot of information that you've already seen, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those slides. If you have any questions about them, let me know, and I'll answer them to the best of my ability. The proposed budget is, is an interim spending plan adopted in June to enable us to do, continue to do business until the final budget is adopted in September. This next slide is to illustrate that the budget is a year-round process. It's not just when we show up here at the board to adopt the proposed budget and adopt the final budget and update your board sometimes during the year. We're already starting to work on the planning for next year's budget, and during the year we monitor the budget to make sure that fund balance comes in at the way we expected it. And there are many other things, and I won't go into detail on all of them. Now, this year, the final budget includes everything that you saw in the proposed budget presentation with, with the additions of the, per the direction of the board at the board workshops. The general, there was no additional impact to the general fund from those, those changes. And although we've made operational reductions over the last several years, we've still had to balance a budget using MTOs and using $31.5 million of general fund fund balance, $9 million in reserves from the general fund and from other funds, and I've just, would like to make the comment that this is not sustainable in the long term. At some point, we're going to have to stop using reserves or reduce our use of reserves and start putting money back in there when we can. This, the recession has lasted a lot longer than anyone expected. We still have, we're still facing challenges from the state. They have a budget deficit, and we still don't have, they still don't have a budget. Historically, they have turned to counties to help balance the budget, so we'll have to come back to your board at a later date with, with the impacts for when the state budget is adopted. This is a comparison of the final budget to the final budget last year. There's a net decline of $26.2 million, which is a 3% decline year over year. This shows more detail by fund of what, what the actual changes are. Infrastructure funding went down by $43 million, and they're actually in the operating funds an increase of $16 million. This is funded in part by fund balance rollover from the different funds, and then in the general fund in particular that we had an extra, well, as, as we mentioned before, we have extra $4 million in fund balance. $5 million of this, this is a comparison of final budget to final budget, $5 million of this, $13 million, actually happened during '09, '10, when we actually received the allocations for HHS. In the budget, we had expected higher state impacts at HHS, which didn't materialize, so we added that back to the budget during '09, '10. The remainder is the fund balance rollover and rebudgets or grant funding, funded expenditures. This is a slide that you've seen before. It just illustrates how we used to have revenues that exceeded expenditures, which allowed your board to fund priorities. That changed during '08, '09, and now we, our expenditures are higher than our revenues. But I should point out that this is all operating funds, not just the general fund, and somewhat masks the effect of the recession on the discretionary revenues, and that's not shown here. So this is a slide that shows the pattern of the discretionary revenues over the last five years, and the discretionary revenues includes property taxes and sales taxes, interest, fines and penalties, those kinds of things. But the property taxes, by far the largest revenue in, in this group, and so this line is actually driven by the behavior of the property taxes over the last five years. We talked about the general fund reserve earlier. As you can see, we, this is part of the planned use of fund, of reserves for the four years, and over the last three years, reserves have decreased by 54%. The recession is lasting longer than we expected, as I mentioned, and so at some point we have to think about reducing our use of reserves. This is a familiar slide. It shows the difference between where we used to be able to use fund balance and, and revenues to fund forward priorities, one-time, one-time things, and now we're using two-thirds of the fund balance rollover to fund operational costs. I just want to talk about fund balance a little more at this point. Fund balance seems to be misunderstood. It is not excess revenue. It is part of the planned budget. Every year, when we plan the budget, we estimate what our fund balance should be, and then during the year, we're monitoring the budget and making, to make sure that the fund balance is going to come in as we projected it. And if during the middle of the year, we think fund balance is going to be low, then we would need to come back to your board to adjust the budget, as we did in fiscal year '08, '09, when we had to make a mid-year budget reduction. I'd like to liken this to doing your household budget. You kind of know how much you have to spend each month. You kind of know how much you, you have to spend it on. You, you know what things you've got coming up. If you have any money left over at the end of the month, you can, you can manage your money if you think you've got, like, you have to replace your tires on your car or something for the next month, so you can save some this month to, to use the next month or to save for a family vacation. You manage your money. We manage the money. We manage the budget so that the fund balance comes in at what we expect it to be. And it is a standard business practice for, for this county and for other government agencies to manage fund balance and to build a budget with a fund balance assumption. This slide you've seen before. It just illustrates the types of things that we have spent, used fund balance and one-time revenues on in the past, and shows that we, we don't have much left to be, to be, to use these days. We'll go to the staffing now. We have 41 fewer funded positions in this year's budget. That's a 2% rid, drop over last year. It's actually a 7% drop since '07, '08, and departments are managing to, still managing to provide services despite the reduction in staffing and the cutbacks that they've had to make. This illustration is the per capita, the per cap, the positions per capita, and as we mentioned before, the red line is actually the funded positions. The blue line is allocated positions per capita. You can see that they have gone down pretty significantly over the last four years. This slide compares the, the proposed budget to the final budget. We saw this at the board workshops. Nothing has changed since then, except for the board-directed changes. This gives you detail by fund of the changes, and if, and I think we've been over this before, so if you have any questions, let me know, but otherwise I'll just move on. This is a slide you've also seen before. We have summarized the, the revenues and expenditures so that we can get it onto one slide. You can see that discretionary revenues actually went down by about $400,000 between proposed budget and final budget. So that concludes the, the presentation that I have for the, the county final budget. We have another slide which involves the special districts and the CSAs. So do you have any questions on any of the slides that I just showed you?
Yes, I have a couple. Jumping back, we made a slide eight.
Yes.
When I'm looking at the subtotal of the operating funds, we're looking at a 3.2% What is the primary driver for that increase?
The primary, well, okay, the, the primary driver, we have the, basically it's the general fund and the public safety fund.
Mm-hmm.
The, the big, big numbers there.
Right.
A $13 million increase in the general fund. As I mentioned, $5 million of that happened during '09, '10, when the HHS impacts from the state did not come in as we expected, so that mid-year budget revision increased the budget at that time by $5 million. The remainder is the $9 million that we see in the, in the change between the proposed and the, and the final budget. $4 million of that is fund balance carryover that we're using on one-time set-asides, as we proposed in the, in the budget workshops, $1 million for prefunding the OPEB for new employees, 1.8 million for, set aside for the liability for retiree-paid health, of retiree-paid sick leave, and $1 million was for the voluntary services program. The other $4 million is basically a mixture of, it's mostly rebudgets or grant funding. One of the grants in particular, Homeland Security Grant, represents $2 million of that. Homeland Security Grant, we, we don't budget it until final budget. It's a, it's a federal grant, and we don't know how much it's going to be when we're putting the proposed budget together, so.
Mm-hmm.
So $2 million of that is Homeland Security Grant alone. There are some other grants in there, such as the Department of Energy Grants for biomass that make up some of that. And also we're spending, we, in proposed budget, we agreed to put $600,000, add $600,000 to operating contingencies to bring it closer to the 1.5% that's required in the financial policies. The other thing is the public safety fund. There was actually more fund balance carryover than we had expected in the public safety fund. That money is being set aside for, 1.6 million for the operating costs for the South Platte Adult Detention Facility when it comes online. Now, that, that is estimated actually at $20 million per year, so 1.6 million is a drop in the bucket, but it's at least a start. And then $900,000 is being set aside for technology improvements, and additional expenditures are for grants, et cetera, in the public safety fund.
Okay. And then the following slide, Slide 9, one that we've seen before a few times. Slide 9 includes all operating funds, which includes state and federal subventions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Slide 10 then shows what our operating revenues would be if we were solely reliant on our property and sales tax revenues. Is that correct?
That's right, yes.
Okay. So, so long as the state continues to operate as it has been, and that is with whatever machinations papering over their deficit, they continue to put money into certain things, and the federal government, as we know, has continued spending fairly aggressively. So should either the state or the feds ever get religion about these things, we're going to be left more dealing with the, the trajectory that's represented in Slide 10 as opposed to what we've been relying on, which is Slide 9. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. That's right.
Okay. And then you noted in terms of positions funded over on Slide 15, that we're down 41 positions, and if you don't have these numbers at your fingertips, I certainly understand, but I'm just curious, with the combination of being down 41 positions or about 2%, plus what the board imposed by way of the agreement with PPEO, total expenses on salaries and benefits year over year from '09, '10 versus budgeted for '10, '11, have those gone up, gone down, or remained approximately the same? In other words, with the action the board just took in regard to the agreement with the personnel, or excuse me, the public employees organization, and the reduction of 41 staff positions, year over year, total expenditures on salaries and benefits countywide, will they go up or will they go down?
I haven't calculated the, the actions taken by the board last, last year.
Last week.
Last week, sorry.
That's probably why you haven't calculated it yet.
But the, I think the salaries and benefits actually will go up year over year without that, and only, not because salaries have gone up, but because the PERS rate has gone up and because health insurance has gone up.
Okay, right.
More than we expected it to.
Right.
So, so I would say year over year, even though we are reducing positions, that it's, it's slightly more for '10, '11 than, than it was for '09, '10, and I really don't have that number, but that is, that is what I remember.
I, I would be interested in, in learning with, with the imposition of the new contract and the 80-20 cost share, as well as the, I'm sorry?
That's not a contract, it's a package.
Oh, thank you, okay. With the imposition of the package, thank you.
Okay.
For the correction. You're right, a contract does imply negotiation, or not negotiation, but agreement by two sides. Yes, you're right. Thank you. With the action the board took last week, I would be interested in seeing what happens in terms of total expenditures on salaries and benefits, comparing '10, '11 budget to '09, '10 actuals.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of the board members have any other questions? Seeing none, I guess we'll go ahead and move on to special districts and like accounts.
Sorry about that. This one slide represents the summary of the changes in the special districts. I have Valerie Bain and someone from DPW is here to answer questions if you have anything, any specific questions regarding this slide.
Any board members have any questions on this particular slide? Okay, I think we move on.
Okay. And so then I guess the next step is to conduct the public hearing.
If I might, Chairman, go back to that last slide, just want to point out something on those reserves. There is significant dollars for reserves, but those are monies specifically collected for county service areas, special districts, sewer, roads, those monies that even if you wanted to use them for other purposes, you'd have to borrow and pay interest payments back within a certain schedule if you wanted to use them for other purposes.
And outside of the general fund.
Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you. That clarification. Okay. Seeing no questions by board members at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to address the board on our proposed 2010-11 final budget? Please do so at this time. And seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move forward with direction to staff in regard to preparation of a resolution for presentation to the board for our September 28th meeting to adopt the final budget. Do we have?
Motion.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we have a motion directing staff to prepare a resolution for final adoption at our September 28th meeting. Motion was Rockholm, second was Holmes. Any discussion on that? Let's roll call, please.
Holmes.
Hi.
Rockholm.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Eulert.
Hi.
Okay. Wraps up that item, and that concludes our board supervisor's meeting for September 14th, and we will reconvene on the 28th. Thank you very much.